The acting mayor for tonight's meeting, so with that we'll call the meeting to order, please. And Karen, do you have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Mayor Bean.
And please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't know if anyone cared to make a motion to approve our agenda tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is our open forum. Karen, do we have anybody that would like to speak tonight?
No one on the list, but I do have, I see Karen Moorhead is online, so I don't know if she wants to speak or not.
Okay.
She's on mute right now.
Karen, if you wanted to speak during open forum, you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
Sir, do you want to get involved with open forum at all?
No, I'm just here for the renewal of my business.
Okay, sure. All right, thank you very much. We'll close the open forum portion then. And next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, it'd be six A through six E, and I'm looking for a motion to approve those, or if someone needs to pull one of them off the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, any comments? All right, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're on our regular agenda. Seven A is Resolution 03132301, acquisition of tax-forfeited parcels. And Dave, you're going to help us out with that tonight?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. From time to time, Washington County has some tax-forfeited parcels that they give the city and other property owners the ability to buy and purchase. A lot of times, they're really of no interest, but the ones that came up this time are an area along North Shore Trail that may be highly beneficial when we redo, reconstruct North Shore Trail to use as stormwater ponding, and now when we're going to have different rules that are triggered when we redo that road. Between myself and Ryan and Patrick took a look at it, and we think it's worthwhile. He's putting in a note to the county's resolution saying that we are interested in it. It doesn't mean that we automatically get it, or that by this resolution we automatically purchase them, it's just basically a letter of interest to the county saying the city would like to purchase these. So what we're looking for tonight, basically the next steps are, is the council sends a resolution along with a letter of interest to the county, and then they evaluate, and then we hear back from them. The land wouldn't be free, it would be sold at a reduced rate because we are using it for either land preservation or stormwater maintenance.
So we'd be buying it from the county, is what you're saying?
Correct, yep. If you use it as right-of-way acquisition, then you can get it for free, but this would be for a different use. You still wouldn't pay market value, it would be less than that because you'd be using it for preservation.
Do you have any idea how much that's going to be, Dave?
I do not. At this point, I mean, if we were the ones that they said we could buy it, we'd come back and get approval to purchase it as well. Most of the lots are at market value, like $1,900 apiece. There's one dry area that's close to $70,000. That you'd probably actually have to put a house on it possibly, but that would be the most. All the rest are, I think, $1 million or $4 million, but the estimated value is that. But other than that, just recommending that you pass the motion, passing that resolution to...
To move forward, basically, is what I'm asking.
Quick question.
Sure, absolutely.
So last Thursday night's Watershed District meeting, there was tax for, there was a conversation about tax forfeiture properties. Do you know, is either the same ones?
These were the same ones, and Abby had actually talked to the Watershed too, and they said they would withdraw their application if the city was going to do a part of it. They would basically want it for the same kind of purpose that we want, but we're the ones going to be putting in stormwater features, the city, there's a little bit of property, and then...
As much trouble as we have along North Shore Drive finding room to do anything there, to me, makes sense. So, yeah.
I'd just quickly add, just to see if you have some more history with North Shore. Obviously, North Shore was constructed and built before any watershed shed rules existed, so when we do go in there and reconstruct it, we would have to comply with their rules because we would be in a full reconstruction project. Unless we do like a millon overlay, which obviously that payment's past that portion time period, we'd have to go and do, get into the subgrade therefore, and we're going to have to treat the impervious surface that's out there with the project. So this just gives us an area without having to have something probably located in private property, or in areas that residents might not support.
I agree, that's always been an issue over there, so. Anybody else have any other questions?
So where is typically, I don't know, funding for this would be a part of the project, or general levy, or what would that, when we do, well, first purchase it, I guess, and then when we construct the waters?
Yeah, it could either be out of the capital fund, or the stormwater fund, or the two that purchase it.
Dan, you have anything to add into the conversation as far as the funding or anything, to answer Blake's question, or?
At this point, I would not have anything to add.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Yeah, I'd entertain a motion, one way or the other, on this issue.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we pass a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the City of Forest Lake to apply for the tax-forfeited lands noted as Resolution 03132301.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're on to seven B, Resolution 031323-02, approval of the state, excuse me, the approval of the sale of property to Independent School District 831, and approval of the related documents. And Abby, you're going to be helping us with that?
No, it's all done today. You'll have to be in touch with Karen in the morning.
I'll go ahead.
Thanks.
You're welcome. At the council's last regularly scheduled meeting, the council approved a purchase agreement with Forest Lake Area School District for the city-owned land that the hockey center, ICE Arena, is located on. There's a number of outstanding items associated with the transfer of this property. First, for your consideration tonight, is an approval resolution. Staff neglected to include that approval resolution as part of your consideration last meeting. That being said, the resolution does encompass a few other things. There is a purchase agreement amendment. There's no changes to the agreement between the school district and the city, it just changes our closing date, gives us till the end of the month, though we are scheduled to close this Friday. It also approves a parking lot maintenance agreement. As a reminder, that part of the purchase agreement provisions is that we would enter into agreement with the school district for the maintenance of the Fenway Athletic Complex, the parking lot in that area, because the hockey center does use that facility pretty consistently in the wintertime. The school district has agreed to maintain 15% of the, or help pay for the costs for the parking lot. That'd be providing wintertime maintenance, and then annual and long-term replacement costs of 15%. The city would be still responsible then for 85%. And then terminating the ground lease, so as a reminder, we have this 35-year lease with the school district that they assumed from FLOT, and it would actually terminate that agreement. So hopefully you've reviewed those documents. If you're still favorable to this land sale, you've moved to approve Resolution 03132302, approving the sale of property at Independent School District 831 and related documents. The one resolution does cover all of the items that I just summarized.
That was going to be my question, thank you. Thank you, Abby. Any questions for Abby, comments?
Quick question on the maintenance agreement. So who does the actual snow removal? Is it the district or the city?
The district does do snow removal, and has done snow removal since they acquired the property. It's been kind of just a spoken agreement, so this helps solidify that they'll continue to do that. And then acknowledging that that is available then to the general public through the winter, that was why we kind of negotiated a little bit, them not maybe paying as much as, for long-term costs, that will absorb more of those in the future.
Any other questions or comments, or? So the biggest dollar thing that we're involved here is just our agreement with the parking area. The maintenance, you know, so the actual purchase price is what?
Yeah, the purchase price is a dollar, nothing's changing on that. The only thing having to do with funding is that they are willing to cost share on the parking lot, where they have not in the past. That was on their accord, they're willing to do that.
This everybody understands. But it does clarify things a little bit, too, so...
It does. It is really nice to have an agreement with them, given the fact that they have been plowing, and that then they have made the commitment to help us with those long-term maintenance needs. There's a benefit to having that parking lot there for the ICE Arena, there's a benefit to the public, but that they acknowledge that we're, we'll do this together in the future, and it's in writing. Both parties have the ability to renegotiate the agreement as well in the future, so...
Thank you, Abby.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 03132302, resolution approving sale of property to Independent School District Number 831 and related documents.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any other further comments? All in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Well, Abby, you're up again. The next thing is the Community Development Administrative Assistant, new hire?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Husnick. That gives me a minute to remember what those titles are when they change from meeting to meeting.
Don't worry about the title.
The Community Development Department has a vacant position, it's an administrative assistant position that this body funded with the 2023 budget, so this is a new position that the city has opted to refill. It's been, as a reminder, we had it 10 years ago, but it's really helping with that support that the Community Development Department needs as it rebuilds. So after reviewing applications and conducting interviews, staff has made a conditional offer to Don Bogie, it's contingent upon city council approval. So staff recommends the council move to hire Don Bogie for the position of Community Development Administrative Assistant, Grade Six, Step One.
Just to be clear now, Abby, this was budgeted in 2022, correct?
This was not budgeted, it was approved with the 2023 budget.
Okay, good, clarify that, just so everybody knows, so...
It is a new hire, it is fully funded for this year. Well, if Don is watching at home, she's probably sweating right now, that's all I'm going to say.
So we don't have to be in a hurry, right?
Just maybe a little bit of her background?
Sure.
It'd be great.
Oh, Don's background?
Yeah.
Sure, she, I will say, we had 65 applicants for the position. We did two different review or interview processes. One was to do a little bit of a written questionnaire, and then in-person interviews. Out of the 65 candidates, if you had asked me to choose one, I would have probably chosen Don without necessarily even meeting her. She has about 20 years of experience doing this exact position in both Lina Lakes and Blaine, so she comes to us with a wealth of knowledge in these other communities, but a diversity of other communities. Not only necessarily following kind of standard operating procedures, but creating them, and definitely knows her way in and around planning and zoning and commission management, so she's definitely an asset, going to be an asset to Forest Lake, we're really lucky to have her.
So she's going to be working pretty much directly with you?
That is correct. Yep.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'd like a motion that we approve the hiring of Don Bogie.
Bogie.
Okay. I didn't even want to try that. For the position of Community Development Administrative Assistant, Grade Six, Step One.
I'll second.
Hey, okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dan, do we have any discussion items tonight?
There aren't any discussion items this evening.
Okay, well, move on then. That takes us right up to staff updates, and what we're going to do is we're going to start with Ryan again, and he can bring us up to date what's going on.
Really, nothing new for updates and related to the projects that we've been talking about. The next project that'll be back in front of you will be Everton Avenue or County State Highway 33. We'll be talking about the cooperative agreement with you at the April 13th City Council Workshop. In the meantime, we're continuing to move through, unfinalizing their plans, working through the appraisals, and then to a different project, County Road 32 or 11th Avenue. We're still looking at a 26 construction project, just had a last public open house, tenants wasn't that well attended, so we've had some follow-up meetings and a one PMT meeting since then, and we're going to send out another letter to all the single-family homes, and then what was the final wording on the apartments? Were we going to get it just to the apartment manager, or were you able to provide?
It sounded like that it would go to the county or to the individual managers, but the county was open to dropping off individual letters for individual apartment tenants as well.
Just trying to get better feedback related to that project, so. Highway 97 Project, MINDOT's working through a staging plan based on knowing soil conditions now, and then doing some preliminary layouts of storm sewer and other factors that need to be considered in that project. Still, lots of things to be discussed on that project. I think they're also starting to try and feel out where the two county projects are going to be, and then the wild card in the room is the Highway 8 Project. You know, if we all of a sudden had all these projects going on at once, you know, imagine what that would do to the area, so I think MINDOT and 97, if anybody's looking at potential schedule change, I think that might be it. It's totally a guess at this point right now, but obviously Highway 8's not fully funded, and that's a lot more dollars we're talking about that it would take to fund that, so that's kind of all the things that are going on with the county and the states, and then the jurisdictional 61 visionary study that's going on. PMT meeting tomorrow, right? Yep, Tuesday. I'm trying to get my days in line here, so... And then just a lot of site redevelopment stuff that we talked about, the EDA, applications, reviews will be coming forth in some meetings in the future. Hopefully, we get some of that stuff off the ground and being built this summer, so seeing a lot of cost increase in construction materials, material delivery delays, and other things that we're working through on the construction side of things, so...
Well, thank you very much for the update. I know there's a million more, so. Any questions for Ryan?
I just have a question. Since we talked about the forfeit properties that potentially purchasing, that timeframe on North Shore, I know, I've heard it, but just maybe kind of an update on that, and how, I know it's in segments, and any way to kind of expedite that process?
I think your eyes will open up a lot when we go through the capital improvement plan this year. We have a lot of projects identified, we don't have the funding. We've laid out scenarios how to fund that. Something leads us a different direction, and we're still back with the stuff that's not getting touched, we're now dealing with higher costs, and it's all going to come together, what are our priorities? And some of those are determined by you guys. We've laid them out, you know, different types of local roads, the major collectors, you know, here's the price tags, here's the process we've got to go through, right? That's stuff that we'll, I believe we're going to talk about earlier this year, because a lot of the stuff, like Eureka, I mean, that's going to be indrivable here in a year or two. North Shore isn't our worst road, and some of the other ones that we're dealing with, so again, it's going to come down to priorities and be knowledgeable about our infrastructure that we have to maintain moving forward, and we're willing to do road tours, bring pictures, whatever information you guys want to make those decisions, just let us know, and we can have that information prepared. Right now, I can't tell you where that is on the list, because it's in a big list, and it just, when a project like Goodview comes up, that wasn't even on the list, but then that became our priority of three years worth of funding, so...
North Shore just seems, because it is such a major road, and it affects so many people, that's where you hear the most about people complaining, roads, and so, you know, I don't know how we try to have that conversation about maybe moving that timeframe up, but it's, I can't imagine it getting much worse, and the numbers I saw, the end last part of it would be done in 2035 or something, maybe I saw? Are we talking 12-plus years, or whatever that, potentially?
Not saying. I don't blame her.
Dave, it's just hard to answer that specifically, right? Because Dave and I have prepared so many estimates every year after year after year, and we lay it out on how we think it should go, and then one or two priorities change, and then it changes the whole pieces of the puzzle and how it all can go together, especially when new funding sources aren't coming into the picture, and our materials and costs are going up, and then all of a sudden, we have the three major projects that are coming in that we're going to have pretty good local shares on, and then that takes away more of our funding mechanisms that can't go to our local roads like North Shore or Eureka. So that's what we need to all work through, and if it takes extra meetings to understand what financing or revenues we have, what we need to deal with, here's our list of, throw the dartboard, right? You know, so, we're all, I can give you guys all that time, you guys need to help that process when we go to the budget cycle.
For several years, we had the luxury of the bids coming in cheaper than overall estimates, and now it's just the opposite. Everything is just going out of hand.
And that's another easy exercise we just did, I compiled some data, one of my colleagues did, just looking at, back at 2019 to present. The amount we're paying for certain bid items is just crazy. That's just since 2019. If I go back five years before that, 10 years, I mean, if I remember going back to 2001, we were paying maybe $30 a ton. Now we're at almost 90.
Yeah.
And I remember I told you, two tons gets you 10 feet on a city road in the development. That 10 feet, well, that's one side of the road, and we still need to do two lifts of that road, right? So that's the linear foot we're talking about, so...
Yeah. Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Dave, got any further updates?
Dr. Ryan bumped us out.
He's only telling the truth.
Yeah, I have nothing additional. Just let's not get any more snow for a little while.
Yeah, where are you going to put it? Amanda, do you have anything for us tonight?
I have no updates tonight.
Okay, thank you. Rick, how are you? How are you doing?
Yeah, good evening. We currently have one police officer vacancy that we went through the interview process two weeks ago. We had only eight applicants, and we had one that we moved forward in the process. We did offer a conditional offer of employment pending, in contingent upon them passing a background investigation, a physical exam, and a psychological exam. If all that goes well, I'll be bringing forward their name and looking at hiring that candidate at a later date. If everything goes well, we're hoping for a start date, possibly late April or maybe May. Other than that, same thing with Dave, typical calls for service that we've been responding to with the police department, the big ones, the last few weeks have all been related to weather, traffic accidents, medicals, you know, unfortunately, people slipping and sliding and falling on ice and things like that, but other than that, no other updates, unless you have some questions for me.
Any questions for Rick? Okay. All right, Abby, do you have anything more for us tonight?
No, I do not.
Dan, how about you?
Just a reminder that next Monday's workshop has been canceled, so there's no workshop next Monday. And then I also want to let the council know that the city is a finalist for Municipality of the Year from the Minnesota Real Estate Journal. We applied for it, it was notified on Friday that we are a finalist for that award. A lot of what was on the application for that award was the policy and planning work that the EDA did, so a lot of this is the result of those plans that we put in place at the EDA level. So we'll find out hopefully here in April if we win that award or not, but to be in the finalists is a pretty good position for the City of Forest Lake, so some pretty exciting news on that front, so cross our fingers that we win that award. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Any questions for Dan?
When will you find out?
As soon as I find out, I'll let everybody know, but they don't have a date. I think the awards themselves are April 20th, so before April 20th, so we'll find out in the next month or so whether we are, but it was, I want to say, a five or six-question application, a lot of it was based on work that had been completed in the last 18 months, and kind of what's in the pipeline now, and a lot of what the city has done from a development standpoint in terms of re-aligning lot standards for MXR1, downtown plan, the CIAP program, partnership with the CDA, I think that really got us to that finalist position, so a lot of that work that we've been doing at the city and at the EDA level is definitely the driver for that.
Okay, thanks, Dan. That'll be a feather in our hat if that happens. No questions about it.
Even just being a finalist, we do then go out in the award program as a finalist, so it does help to raise our awareness in the development community, so it's a pretty big deal, so...
Yeah. Anyone else? Karen, you have anything for us tonight?
I do have just one update, just a reminder, basically, that April 10th, Monday, April 10th, is the Local Board of Appeals meeting that begins at 5:30 PM. Normally, the EDA meeting would be scheduled at that time, so that would be canceled, and then Local Board of Appeals begins at 5:30, and then council meeting will follow right after that. The Local Board of Appeals meeting will be held upstairs in the community room.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Karen? All right, we're going to move on to council updates. Blake, do you have anything for us?
I don't have any updates, I just have a couple of questions, and maybe this should have been in the discussion part. I had sent an email to Dan last week, and I knew you were out, just about the study that the EDA approved on Lake Shore and that, and just maybe kind of a timeframe of that and what that looks like, and then I think some of you might be aware that the Lake Association did, has offered a 15,000 donation of doc to the city to add on to the doc that's currently there, and my understanding is we've kind of put that on hold just to find out where we're at with this study.
So to that point, I don't, I'm playing catch-up today, I was out of the office last week on vacation, so I haven't circled back with Bruce on it, but before I left, I did talk to Bruce, the person who's doing the planning for the doc study, I said, advance that to the top of your list to get that done as fast as you can, because obviously, when you have a donation that's on the table, we want to make sure that we take advantage of that. I don't have a defined timeline at this point as to when he's going to get that back. I do know he was putting that front of his list on there, and I also was informed that in my, when I was gone, a DNR meeting has been set up, so we're going to be meeting with the DNR as well, which will help guide Bruce's redesign of that doc situation, so it's in progress right now, I just can't give you a definitive timeline estimate when it'll be completed by, but it is, the first thing on Bruce's punch list is to get that doc figured out for the shoreline.
Right, and then maybe just a couple of bullet points of what exactly else the study entails.
So the study also entails all of the shoreline components, so if there's any, you know, there's a kayak launch that was included in that, I'm trying to go off my memory here, there's also plantings, like looking at the plantings in the park, any type of shoreline improvements that are needed from a stabilization standpoint, and then also looking at the current location of the boat launch, and seeing if there's any other opportunities for us to move that in an area, either in downtown or adjacent to downtown, for relocation of that, or possible shifting of the parking, so getting out of the municipal lot and allowing that to happen somewhere else. So it's kind of inclusive of all of the stuff that really is surrounding the lake and the Lakeside Memorial Park, as well as the boat launch in downtown, we combine that in one We combine that in one group because it's, with the boat launch study, if it's not able to move, that does sort of reconfigure how some of the other portions of the downtown plan lay out, so we want to kind of get that addressed first so we don't go too far down the road with other plans to have to kind of go back and go back to the drawing board. So all of it, I do know when I originally talked to Bruce, when this was approved in February, he said probably three to four months total on the complete study, but with that, the first priority is the public docking and also as part of that is also the evaluation of the impact of public docking as well as if the Yarbo Club expands, at least having an idea of how those two interplay and play off each other. So it's a, it's a comprehensive study of the city's use of the lakeshore in downtown.
Yeah, I just, I think that it's important that we embrace that and that donation by the Lake Association and that even if the study isn't completely completed, that dock can be moved, the Public Works puts it in all the time, so I think it's, it's a great generous donation and something we need to make sure that we embrace and try to make sure we fund the other piece of it, which is about another ten thousand dollars, according to the president of the Lake Association, so.
Okay, thank you. Council member Valento, do you have any updates?
Nothing from me.
Okay, thank you. Council member Erickson, do you have any updates?
No, I just mentioned I attended the watershed district meeting last, last week. They got some, you know, good stuff going as they always do, but no other updates.
Okay. I attended the EDA meeting this evening before the regular council meeting and Abby spent quite a bit of time going through the history of the EDA and the projects in place and that sort of thing and then Dan came further up with our budget and, you know, how much money we got in the bank and that kind of thing and so, and how that money is divided up. So a lot of, a lot of good information and, and then the chamber of commerce talked about the business summit and the spring fling and the, all the things that they've got going here to involve people in the city, so it was a good, good meeting. So with that, I think that wraps up everything, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further comments? All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.